I now call the January 3, 2023 Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:45. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the claims.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $348,377.14, a manual check in the amount of $1,000, payroll and liabilities for 12/16/2022 in the amount of $386,449, $386,449.45, for a total of $735,826.59.
Second motion.
Councilmember Salisbury made the motion. Second, but Councilmember Larson. Any amendments or discussions?
Your Honor.
Yep.
I have one discussion. There's a bill to the county for $111,000. I'm wondering, is that the total for 111,430? Is that, it's got an asterisk by it. It says, prisoner housing, June through November.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman and Committee Member, that is for our jail bill, and we did have a backlog of invoices from the county. Ms. Harrison, their team and her team went through the invoices and ensured that we owed the amount that was invoiced, and we did issue payment, or proposing to issue payment.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anything additional that the committee needs to discuss tonight?
No.
All right. With that, we adjourn at 6:46.
Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Salisbury, and the invocation will be by Councilmember Larson. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve the city of Riverton. We are thankful for the boundest amounts of moisture which we have received. We're thankful for the election process where we are allowed to vote and to choose. We're thankful for that process. We ask that Thou might watch over and bless those newly elected officials, that they might have the burning desire to serve the city of Riverton and its citizens. We ask that Thou would watch over and bless those first responders, our police officers, our medical workers. Father, we are thankful for all our blessings, and we say this: Name Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
This time, would the City Clerk please do a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay Cox.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum tonight. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Pronto.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We now have before us the agenda. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as written, or if there's any comments or changes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda passes. Would the, let's see. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the Minutes, December 20, 2022 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the Minutes, January 3, 2023 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for January 3, 2023.
Okay. Are there any other items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening and approved the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $348,377.14, a manual check in the amount of $1,000, payroll and liabilities for December 16, 2022, in the amount of $386,449.45, for a total of $735,826.59.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or amendments to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Your Honor.
Yes.
It's a point of order. There was no motion on that. Can we get a motion for the approval?
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
To approve the county, the
Second.
Consent agenda. Okay. So, motion by Councilmember Cox, second by Councilmember Borders. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good thing they only let me do this once a year. The next item in the agenda is the introduction and oath of office for Mayor and City Council members. Would the City Clerk please conduct the oath of office for newly elected Mayor Tim Hancock?
(inaudible).
Please raise your right hand and take it off your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Tim Hancock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law
That I have not knowingly violated any law
Related to my election.
Related to my election.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
That I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
That I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Sure, we could do that if she'd like. Yeah, if my family can come up. There's a lot of them.
No wonder he won. No wonder he won.
Pull out the wider lens.
Oh, we got you just fine. Look right here, the way you can't.
One, two, three.
I don't know which way to look, so. That's okay. All right. Well, we also need Councilmember Larson and Councilwoman Borders to come down. And Councilmember Bailey.
Almost.
All right. I don't know the protocol exactly, but we'll do it the same way I just did it. So if you could raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
And state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
Related to my election.
Related to my election.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
All right. Thank you. Oh, Kyle's.
I gotta sign him.
Maybe it's by age.
Yeah. Well, then, I'm. Hold the date. Hmm.
And I think this is yours, if I'm not mistaken. That's why Kristen's here to.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Let's see who's next. Well, might be by age. No, I'm just kidding. It's Carla. All right.
I was just waiting till they're all done. Waiting to stand up till they're all done. Just to make Lindsay look comfortable.
I'd have no idea that's your signature. Mine's about the same. Yeah, I'm just.
Like, it's kind of uneventful.
I got 20, 20.
Now, let's get this party going. It's all yours.
Give me just a minute. I gotta pull out my laptop. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate it. And I'm not gonna sit there and talk a long time so we can finish the meeting. And if we want to chat, we can do that at the end. So, but thank you, everybody, for your support here today. So, the next part of the meeting is to do leadership ballots. This is for the council president and the vice president. City administrator, if you could kind of tell us what we're doing here next?
Absolutely. Each January, the city council members elect via secret ballot the position of council president and vice president. Each of you have a ballot before you. We'll handle the council president election first, and then, once that's finalized, we'll do the same process for the vice president. Essentially, select one of your peers to serve as council president when you're ready. Our interim chief and I will grab the ballots, count them, and report back.
All right. Well, then, let's do that process. Now, who's gonna collect those? Are you gonna be collecting those, Kyle? Oh, yeah, we're doing one at a time. Thanks, Mike. Once a year, you do pretty well.
That's right.
All right, just so everybody watching knows what's going on. They're going out this way, and they'll count and let us know the results.
Whether we have to change seats.
Right, yeah. And name tags.
What is it? Nearly implemented $100 fine for phone ringing? I don't know.
My phone dinged a little bit earlier, so. That was a pretty nice beat, though. My son, John, he likes to dance. He had to stop himself. I saw it. He was kinda.
Your Honor, I'm pleased to report that all of you voted and voted well. However, we do have a tie. Councilwoman Mike Bailey and Councilwoman Carla Borders received the same amount of votes and were the top vote getters. And so, you should have another ballot sheet in front of you, and we'll have another secret ballot election. But this time, please choose between either Councilwoman Borders or Councilwoman Mike Bailey for the position of council president.
So the one that says council vice president? Oh, we're passing.
He's passing out other ones.
So, Your Honor, Kristen was very prepared for this, and so was her team. So they thought if, in the chance there was a tie, we'd have another ballot.
Thank you. That one's extra.
This would normally be a good time for a song and dance routine.
Music.
Brian has a jazz number put together. We need a plan on this, so.
We need the Jeopardy music.
Yeah. Every year, we're gonna swap. We're gonna have a different senior staff member that's going to be in charge of.
Music?
Music, yeah.
Of entertainment.
If I had a piano, I'd play something for you, but I don't have a piano.
Let's get that on the list to have a piano and.
Yes. Cakewalk is a fun one, yeah. I would ask that, as you're leaving, so that I don't have to eat all those cupcakes, grab one or two or three, bring them home to the people you love.
He's so cute.
Your Honor, Mike Bailey received the highest number of votes to serve as council president.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you, everybody, for participating in that. All right, same thing, I guess, with the vice president, then. We could have fill out the ballot. So I guess, so people know what's going on here. Generally speaking, at meetings, the mayor is the presiding officer. But in the event I'm not here, the council president, as you saw earlier in this meeting, would be the person who would take the control of the meeting. And then, in the event that I'm not here and Mr. Bailey's not here, then whoever we vote for for vice president would be the one who would take the meeting. We don't go any further than that.
I don't think so, yeah.
I think you might run out of, I don't know if you could have a quorum. Let's see. You can still have a quorum theoretically. You can also have somebody appointed as mayor pro tem if you had just four people, and that works, too. I'm just talking to fill the space here, so I don't have to sing or something.
We'll get a cupcake.
We're gonna have a cupcake break? I will say we have a couple of police officers that are good at singing. Maybe we'll make sure they're here next time, and they could sing.
Your Honor, I'm pleased to report we have another tie. However you've outdone yourself, currently, there is a tie between Carla, Lindsay, and Dean. So if you wouldn't mind including those three and then voting again on the ballot that'll be distributed to you.
You were prepared for this one, too?
No more after this.
So if we have a two-way tie next, it's not gonna work? Could you remind me of the three again?
Yeah.
That's, that didn't surprise me. So, I guess while we're waiting, I'll tell you, I got stuck today. Anybody else get stuck today? Yes, I, yeah, we talked about yours. And I will tell you, I was really grateful for city staff who happened to be driving by and plowing, and they helped me get out. And I just, I really appreciate how much work people have been putting in. I don't know if people know this, but we're down vehicles. Everybody has been working quite hard. We're putting people to work as fast as we can to plow. And so, I know that it's been a really difficult, frustrating process, but we have people that are hard at work trying to make it so we can be driving around and not get stuck all the time. And that's it for my story. Thanks.
Your Honor, Dean Pronto received the highest number of votes.
All right, sounds good. I'm sure if Dean were here, he'd say thank you, too. All right, well, that sounds great. Thank you, everybody. Next thing on the agenda is communication from the floor. Any for citizens comments? If you see, we have the agendas out there. If you want to talk about something that's on the agenda that has a public hearing set for it, most of those will say right on it, public hearing, you can talk then. If you have something else that's not on the agenda that you want to speak about right now, you are welcome to come up. Please come up to the microphone. You may not know this, but our meetings are actually televised. You can see the cameras. You can wave to them if you like. But if you come on up and would like to say something to the council, please address at the podium, and please tell us your name before you start speaking. So anybody that wants to come up, now's the time.
Hi, I'm Greg Talabas. I'm here to talk about the Community Watch. We really want to go forward. It's a, it's a battle, but it's good. And so, we're hoping that we'll have your support. And we're gonna be moving meetings to the senior center. We'll probably have some here, too, when time allows. But there's a lot of work to be done, because the community just doesn't quite just jump in. And so, it's gonna take a lot of effort. But we're definitely gonna need counsel, and you, Mr. Mayor, and everybody to really help us keep moving on this. You can walk around and give all the signs you want and meet everybody you want, but until the public starts participating, it's just, it's gonna take some work. And so, we really hope that you'll support this, Jim, as we go forward.
Another note is that during the winter, it's kind of hard to have meetings if people are stuck. And so, we're gonna start having Zoom meetings. We're gonna continue having those on the second Thursday at 7:00, like we did, you know, here in the chambers. It'll just be in the Zoom meeting. And so, we do have a Facebook group, and it's a private group so that people can be confidential about their, you know, their neighborhood and everything. So, I've been doing some research, and we already have about four plus the two that we started. So we have about six areas that have a watch program. So it is growing. As far as the business watch, we had a very successful meeting with the Riverton downtowners. And so, it'll be a regular agenda item on their, at their meetings. So, any issues or concerns that business owners have can, it'll be a regular agenda item on there, so.
Well, good.
We got volunteers now for the painting in the graffiti in town that we've been doing. And so, that's a good thing for springtime. And I had a small little program going to get seniors cookies down to the senior center. But I ate them. So I have to start over. Wasn't good. Four of them, four. But I'll be back on it. So, you know, to take things to the seniors, cover up graffiti, get out there, meet our neighbors, to work hard to make our community the awesome community that it is. And so, it's not easy. But we're gonna keep grinding. Be looking for your help. I'll probably be calling you more than you like.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think I told you that before. Feel free to call me. That's, that's good. That's what I'm here for. Well, I appreciate your help, and I guess the biggest thing I can say I'd need your help with tonight would be the cupcakes. If you can put away cookies.
I felt so horrible.
Can you tell us, you said the second Thursday of the month?
Yeah, for, now, that's when we had them before. I'm asking, you know, during the winter's kind of hard, so I'm asking those who are in the group what works best for them. You know, we're having, we have the senior center as a place, but for the winter, the Zoom meetings for now are gonna probably take place.
Okay.
Until we figure out what we want to.
And if somebody were to get on Facebook and want to find the Community Watch group?
Riverton Community Watch. And it's a private group, so you can just ask to join. And I will accept you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I am on there right now. And I just sent the request.
Excellent. All right.
All right, so Riverton Community Watch is the one that would be the Facebook group to join, and then you'll keep us posted on your next meeting, then?
Yes, we'll keep, everything that. Yes, we'll keep, everything that is on there, there's actually, the packet is on there if you want to start your own Community Watch program. And we also have a website that hopefully will eventually be able to have the different areas, so when somebody moves to Riverton, or somebody moves in Riverton, they can see that there is a Community Watch area for them.
Good deal. Well, good. Well, I appreciate your efforts.
I will say shoveling sidewalks is a good way to get to know your neighbors or help your neighbors, so. Or getting stuck.
We did some of that today, yeah.
So congratulations, and we'll be seeing y'all soon.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the city. My name is Zachary Vogel. I'm the manager of the local Domino's here in town, right next door. I just want to start off by saying thank you, guys. The energy in this room is a lot different than previous meetings I've had. We have a new city administrator, new public works director, an interim new chief of police. We have new mayor and a city council that I hope is going to bring us into the future. I don't want to start off today with the biggest problems of the city. However, snow is on everybody's mind. The snow packet that was put out by the city and shared by Mr. Hancock today was from 2017. That has been quite a while ago. We have new, we have different schools, we have different health organizations. The Wind River Clinic on 12th Street is a busy place. We have that new learning center that's right there on 12th and Jackson that needs access to. We have different, different areas in town that possibly need to be reprioritized for our snow removal. Now, I'm not asking that we just abandon all hope today and just start tomorrow with plowing of different streets. But I would like this new administration, this new council, to revisit what areas in town actually need and have the most traffic, the most places that get stuck, so on and so forth. I live at the corner of 12th and Park. I spent three and a half hours yesterday trying to dig an eight-car pileup of people trying to get from 12th Street onto Park, because they would stop. We'd tow one vehicle out, the people that stopped would then get stuck, and so on and so forth. And I know it's not just that street alone. I know our people are limited. I spoke with Kyle this morning about asking possibly with state help, or our neighbors. We send firefighters to California. We help our neighbors in other communities and other counties. I was wondering if possibly we could ask for help on these huge snowstorms. Not the daily things that we are used to, but this is a snowstorm that has happened once every almost five, 10 years. And I believe we need to have a plan for things like that. Our 2017 plan seems to work when we have a normal amount of snow. And I am proud of our public workpeople on the diligence they work, the 24-hour shifts, the overtime they're putting through, but that overtime is killing our budget. I think we could ask for some assistance with the state, or FEMA, or some sort of other funds. That's for you guys to decide on how to get those funds, so our city's not buried in monetary loss, not only, and buried in snow. But as I said back in 2017, the last big snowstorm, if no one can get to a plowed street, making sure Main, Federal, and these artery streets are plowed isn't gonna do very good. I'm sure ambulances aren't going to be calling, people will be like, "I'm sorry, you live on 15th Street, can you meet us at Main and Federal? I know you're having a heart attack, but we just can't make it down your street in a timely manner. Can you meet us halfway?" So I'm just hoping that this, going forward with new administration, new council, new thing, new city mayor, that we come up with different plans. Something that wasn't 2017, five years old. Something even city plumbing that's been repaired and disintegrated and repaired over the last 30 years. That we can actually come up with new ideas in the next few years of your term with our new help that we have, that isn't so much of a, "we don't have the budget, we don't have the people for it, we're never going to have the budget, we're never going to have enough people." I think it's time that us as a city, with Community Watch, private individuals, public comment, we come up with new solutions in this post-pandemic era of not having enough people, not having enough money, not having the right equipment. We start making up and being creative on how we accomplish things that we thought we could do with the limited resources we now have. And that's all I'm asking of this new term and this new administration and this new council. Any questions?
Mr. Butterfield, I guess, did you want to address any of that? Just in terms of, I know the plan says on it, 2017. I don't know how much we've relooked at that over the years. How often have we sat down and looked at? It's my understanding, even, was I was on the council, it was something that we would talk about frequently, even if that's what we've got written. But tell me more about the plan that we have in terms of snow removal.
Sure. Your Honor, our Public Works Department reviews that policy and plan every year to ensure that our employees know how to respond when we do have snow events. Staff has no issue at all with reviewing it to see if it is appropriate to change some of our priorities. One thing that we do balance is the resources we have available to us. That includes our equipment and our people. But we, we're always willing to look at our policies and update them. It's weird to say 2017 was that long ago, but it is. And so we do review it, and we ensure that our employees know how to follow it. But if it's time to look at our priorities, we'd be happy to look at it.
I do believe, as a citizen, an actual showing of a public comment and meeting might alleviate some of the just complaints that we all hear of. The city never does anything. Because I'm sure we've all heard that complaint somewhere along our day. And I know you guys are working your tails off and doing everything you can, but I believe possibly public comment and public hearings with public input might actually show our, your constituents that you are doing something besides just pushing under the rug, saying we don't have the budget or the means, or something like that. I think openness and open-door policy might alleviate some of the just utter complaints versus constructive criticism.
Your Honor, back in 2017, the, Kyle was the road guy. And he wanted to do a study on it. And at the time, we only had, was it 75 people, Mike?
Something like that.
And, and so we were requested by the public to plow to the center. Now, plowing to the center is the slowest way to clear roads. So we, we did that because that's what the public wanted, to get out of their driveways. And so by doing that, that minimizes the amount of area you can clean. Okay? So we are not against plowing to the center, plowing to the middle, plowing, any way we can get it done, we want it done. But you don't want to imprison somebody in their own yard because they can't get through a three-foot drift. So there are several things that need to be addressed on this one in five or one in 10. I know on 16th East, that is a thruway now. And we have a lot of cars parked that shouldn't be parked on the side of the street, because it inhibits cleaning the street. I mean, if you've got a Winnebago Mini parked on the side of the street, that is in violation. That's greater than 20 feet, and it hasn't been moved in a day. So all of these things we need to look at, but we, we still need to serve the public.
And I agree completely. I mean, I've spoke with, I've talked about possibly getting code enforcement. I brought that up before. But once again, at least the idea that we're trying. I mean, 16th Street, we can't plow directly. I'm not asking to plow every art, side road or things like that. Possibly add intersections, most populated intersections, to Main, to the thing. I know Park Street, because is there 16th Street, all these residential straight places that people are coming from are the ones where people are getting stuck. The que, the answer is not, are we gonna plow to the side? Are we gonna plow to the center? Are we gonna ask for volunteers to less block their parkway? The question is, are we going to plow in a timely manner when we do get three to five feet of snow in a three-month period? That's the, that's the point I'm bringing up. I brought it up years ago, that it's, once again, the city is doing an amazing job with the plan they have now. The point I'm trying to make is, we have crumbling infrastructure in certain parts of the town. We have a snow plan that's year, that's, hasn't been written out and updated, and like, updated in written form in years. And I want us, our new administration, our new directors, our new chief of police, our new city council, to take that to heart, that there are some things in this town that we just, as a community, need to look at what has been put on the back burner. I mean, the snow thing is a seasonal thing. We live in Wyoming, we're gonna deal with it. But having, going forward, the next 10, 20 years, are we going to be in this spot in 10 years being like, "we have to replace this water line because we did it the cheapest way possible on Main and 9th Street, three years in a row"? Or are we going to come up with new technologies, new ideas? Are we gonna come up with, we can do half the work with half the money and half the people? So I'm not, I'm saying you guys are doing great for what you're doing and everything you're doing. I just want this new council to keep in mind that the future is coming forward. We're never going to have the money or the resources we want. And I just want the energy that we have here today to continue on, that we keep an open topic, and not just a "we just can't do it" kind of attitude that we've seen in the past.
Well, I appreciate you coming and talking about that. And I think we've definitely gonna take some of that to heart. We'll talk about it, we'll come up with different ways to look at it. I mean, the thing is, is I, I agree with some of what you're saying in terms of businesses change, locations change, where we're driving changes. So I think it's, it's definitely something I think we want to keep looking at, and we'll continue to do that.
And that's all I'm asking, is that we continue to look at it and not just assume that it's working from something that's happened years ago.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody, did you have something? Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Well, I realize, as I'm having people walk out, including my wife and kids, that I probably should have said something earlier, so I will before they walk out. Since this is citizens' comments, and I'll take a little bit of time. I just wanted to thank my family, and actually, if you could come up here, just so people can see you guys, come on up. It's okay, no one's gonna bite ya. I don't make any promises about some of them. Come on up to the podium so people can see ya. So this is my wife, my daughter Katerina, my son Royce, my daughter Melody. This is only a few. The others have disappeared. Two are playing in the halls. So I've really appreciated my wife and my kids. They helped through this campaign, they were going door-to-door. You've probably met some of them, if you live in Riverton. And so I just wanted to say thank you for all the support you guys have given, and thanks for coming here tonight, and just really appreciate everything you've done. And my mom is here, too. I neglected. Well, she was behind Kara. So thank you, and I'm, I'm, I'm really just grateful for all the support from the community, everybody that voted. I have my committee, some of my committee members are here. All that's left right now is Eric and Tara Carr, I think. Yes, but before, we had Zach Larson here and his wife. J. Del Hovander didn't make it tonight. Sandy Lurz and Georgia Davis were here earlier. They were very helpful on the committee. Cody Beers. I'm trying to, I had to write down, because I didn't want to miss anybody. Diana Mahoney, Ed Newbold, and Sarah Tolstedt. So I just wanted to thank everybody that was on my committee for the support. And I know, a little bit self-serving, and I apologize for that. But I do appreciate you for your help with the election. And everybody out there, whether you voted for me or not, it really doesn't matter. I'm really looking forward to working with the community, and I appreciate your support for our city and everything that we've done. So, thank you. That was a little out of order. I probably should have said that earlier, but I was just excited for citizens' comments. That's just always the funnest thing, and the leadership ballot. So, thank you, guys. You, you don't need to stick around and have squirmy kids. All right, moving on. I think that was it for citizens' comments. I didn't miss out on anybody. All right, next is the City Council Committee Appointments. This is a report from me. I think we have the packet that I hope everybody had seen on the council. You told me you would give this to me, Kyle. Did you give it to me? You did, sure enough. Thank you. The city of Riverton has eight committees that are made up of community members. They include Airport Board, the Construction Board of Appeals, the Edge Committee, the FAST Committee, the FORCE Committee. Those are some acronyms that maybe people are used to. Or not, the Edge Committee decides what to do with half-cent funds. The FAST Committee is the Air Service Committee. The FORCE Committee is the 1% Committee, the Fix Our Roads Citizens Committee. We have the Planning Commission, the Rendezvous Balloon Committee, and the Tree Board.
Your Honor, if it's okay, if we could pause there and just go back to covering the city council appointments, and then we'll get into the city.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of my time. I'll go to that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. I think everybody has in their packets the mayoral council committee appointments. If you have that, I would consider a motion to approve the mayoral council committee appointments.
So moved.
Second.
That'd be Councilmember Bailey with the motion, Councilmember Cox to approve those appointments. Any discussion on that or changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed. So that's on our council. We have, everybody has different boards that they're liaisons with, or they work with. And so we were just approving that. Now on to what I had already said, which was, and I apologize, thank you, Kyle, citizen board appointments. And I had already read those, I kind of stole Mr. Butterfield's thunder. How about you give us the report on that, Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, I'm fine with you giving that as well, however you'd like to handle it. But as, as it was mentioned, there are several committees that we ask citizens to participate on. And as was just approved, we have council members that serve as liaisons to those. City staff does solicit interest for vacancies that we do have on these committees. Of the ones that Mayor Hancock mentioned, only a few of them had vacancies on them. That included the Edge Committee, which is a two-year term, the Planning Commission, which is a four-year term, the Rendezvous Balloon Committee, which is a one-year term, and the Tree Board, which is a four-year term. So of those vacancies on the committees that I just listed, we advertised. I want to say thank you to our city staff that handled that, and a lot of that was Kristen's team. From that advertisement, we did receive letters of interest from community members to either be appointed to these committees or reappointed to these committees. And Mayor Hancock has gone through each of these letters of interest. They're included in your packet. For the Edge Committee, Your Honor, would you like to announce these, or would you like me to announce them?
You could go ahead.
Okay. So for the Edge Committee, Mayor Hancock is proposing Jeremy Hughes, Janet Winslow, Leonard Coserog, Marissa Selvig, Ryan Preston, Mary Axum, and Eric Carr to serve as full-time members of the Council. to serve as full-time members of that committee. And as alternates, Josh Salsgaver and Cody Beers. For the Planning Commission, Christine Anderson, Bethany Baldes, and Autumn Williams. For the Rendezvous Balloon Committee, Carrie Feig, Patricia Nuland, or Pat Nuland, uh, Jerry Bosch, Andy Samuelson, Carla Kelly, and Morgan Miller. And then for the Tree Board, Tammy Schreuer, Bart Ringer, and Barb Yates. Um, city staff will seek interest from community members should we have future vacancies, and these will come back to you, um, as a mayoral recommendation for appointment. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Well, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the mayoral appointments for the Edge Committee, Planning Commission, Riverton Rendezvous Committee, and the Riverton Tree Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, seconded by Councilwoman Borders. Any discussion on the proposed appointments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, if you have been appointed, I think that we have some members here who have just appointed. Could you stand up so that people know who you are? We have here Bart Ringer, who is just appointed to the Tree Board, Eric Carr to the Edge Committee. We've actually got a good mix here. Pat Nuland for the Riverton Rendezvous Balloon Committee, and Barb Yates for the Tree Board. So thank you very much for your service, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you do, and appreciate you coming to the meeting, so thank you. I would encourage everybody, uh, if you have an interest in any of these things, or even if you don't have an interest, but you just have an interest in serving, um, a lot of what happens in our community, uh, is because of hard work of our citizen committees, so please, if you're interested, reach out to me, reach out to, uh, Mr. Butterfield, anyone, and, and let us know. Uh, okay, public hearing and consideration of sale of vehicles to the town of Dubois. Public Works Director report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, before you tonight is a item that came up on the, uh, December 6th council meeting, requesting permission to sell two vehicles to the town of Dubois. Uh, provided, the statute provides that, and it provides the council the authority to set the terms of that sale. Part of that also requires the public hearing, which would be tonight. And if approved tonight, the sale would proceed forward. This was originally requested by the former mayor, John Meyer, in Dubois. I, today, received a phone call from their new, their Public Works Director, and they're still interested in moving forward.
Good to hear. All right. Well, on that note, then, uh, to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Borders with the motion, seconded by Councilmember Bailey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, I declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I'd ask those individuals who are wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone who wants to speak about this proposed sale of property?
Seeing that, Your Honor, I would move to close public discussion.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, motion by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Uh, to close the public hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the sale of a one nineteen ninety Ford F-250 dump truck, one nineteen ninety-nine Dodge two thousand five hundred, twenty-five hundred utility truck to the town of Dubois, Wyoming.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Salisbury, seconded by Councilmember Larson. We verified, even with the change, still willing to?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed. Thank you. Uh, municipal court judge, alternate judge, city attorney appointment. We have to do this every year, where we have to appoint the judge, we have to appoint the city attorney, uh, and the alternate judge. Um, I spoke with, uh, our judge, Judge McKee, expressed, uh, curiosity, I guess, whether she was still willing to stay on, if she wanted to continue to stay on. Uh, she's willing to stay on. She told me that if that changed, she'd let me know, so she's, uh, she's willing to stick around and continue her appointment as the municipal court judge. Uh, we also have, uh, the alternate judge and the city attorney. Alternate judge, of course, is Erin Vincent, and the city attorney is Rick Salisbury, or Rick Solisberry. Man, I can't believe I did that. Rick Solers, that's funny. So, um, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the mayoral appointments of the municipal court judge, the alternate judge, and the city attorney. Uh, their salaries are set out. I, this is the problem with, I need to change my settings so this doesn't turn off on me every time. They're set out in the packet, I guess, is what I can say.
Your Honor, the Teresa McKee is three thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars, nineteen cents a month. And then Erin is an hourly rate of a hundred dollars an hour, and Rick Solers a hundred and twenty-five an hour.
Thank you. I, me running this meeting has been purely to make Mike Bailey feel better. Because he was thinking he hadn't done very well earlier. So, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of the municipal court judge, alternate judge, and city attorney, and the salaries for each appointment.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Councilwoman Borders, seconded by Councilman Larson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, Resolution Number fourteen fifty-eight, Designation of Official Depositories, Finance Director's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Statutorily, the city of Riverton shall designate official depositories by approval of the governing body. This action must occur upon the election of a new governing, governing body or the appointment of a new clerk. Resolution fourteen fifty-eight addresses the designation of our local financial institutions requesting approval as an official depository of the city of Riverton and the authorized signatories of the city's accounts. We have received applications from Bank of the West, Central Bank and Trust, First Interstate Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and Wyoming Community Bank. At this time, the staff recommends approval of Resolution Number fourteen fifty-eight, designating the mayor, council president, city administrator, and city clerk to serve as signatories on the city's banking accounts, and agree, agree to allow these banks as official depositories for the city of Riverton. I will also mention that the council vice president would also be listed as a signatory on the bank accounts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would the city clerk please read Resolution Number fourteen fifty-eight by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed Resolution Number fourteen fifty-eight, a resolution designating official depositories for the city of Riverton, Wyoming, requiring joint signatures on all orders for payment of money from city accounts, and designating certain individuals as signatories and alternate signatories on city accounts at said banks.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution fourteen fifty-eight as noted.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey with the motion. Is that Councilwoman Cox? Okay. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, Resolution fourteen fifty-nine, Designation of the Legal Newspaper, City Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution Number fourteen fifty-nine is a resolution designating the official legal newspaper for the city of Riverton. This is required by state statute and must be done on an annual basis. The Riverton Ranger is the only printed periodical that has the basic standards required by statute to meet this designation. With the approval of Resolution Number fourteen fifty-nine, it will ensure that the city will meet all statutory requirements for our publication processes. We also, our staff also strives to provide transparent and current information to the public, not only via the required means of printed publication, but also, also through the city's website and city-sponsored social media outlets as well. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution fourteen fifty-nine by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed Resolution Number fourteen fifty-nine, a resolution designating the official legal newspaper for the city of Riverton for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three.
Chair would entertain a motion for approval of Resolution fourteen fifty-nine.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Salisbury, seconded by Councilwoman Cox. Sometimes I can't, your voices, I don't know. I never would've thought you sounded alike at all. Maybe I just need to be looking over there so I can tell. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Resolution Number fourteen sixty, City Senior Citizens and Community Center Endowment Board, City Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you tonight with this resolution, um, you'll have an opportunity just to clarify some of the responsibilities associated with the endowment board and the endowment fund. So in nineteen ninety-eight, the city of Riverton and the Senior Citis, Senior Citizens Center entered into an agreement regarding the senior center. Um, Resolutions eight hundred and eleven seventy-nine, um, established the endowment board as it relates to that center, and then clarified the management and dispersments of funds associated with the endowment. So the above referenced, or previously referenced Resolution eleven seventy-nine superseded and rescinded the original resolution, which was Resolution eight hundred. Opposed Resolution before you, which is fourteen sixty, similarly supersedes and rescinds eleven seventy-nine and eight hundred. Basically, the provisions mirror that of Resolution eleven seventy-nine. It simply updates some of the membership, um, of the, of those that are on the endowment board. Specifically, um, by resolution, it stated the Administrative Service Director would be on that board. That position no longer exists with the city and hasn't existed for some time. The associated responsibilities, um, of the Administrative Service Director were given to the Finance Director several years ago. So this resolution just reflects and updates, um, current practice. And then it also designates a member of the city council to serve on the board, and that member of the council is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, and that happened earlier this evening. Uh, the previous resolution stated that the, um, chairperson of the Finance Committee automatically, uh, served on the endowment board for the senior center. So this just changes that to where it's council appointment, or mayoral appointment with council consent. Everything else in the resolution is consistent with previous resolution.
Thank you. Uh, would the city clerk please resolution, please read Resolution Number fourteen sixty by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed Resolution Number fourteen sixty, a resolution rescinding Resolutions Number eight hundred and eleven seventy-nine and establishing and clarifying the management and dispersment of the Riverton Senior Citizens and Community Center Endowment Fund.
I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number fourteen sixty.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey has the motion, Councilman Larson has the second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the opportunity to stay on the senior endowment board. Um, it, we only meet every three months, and so I've got a good, um, relationship with the board, and to start all over again with someone new, kind of throws it, and you have to backtrack and go over everything that's been taken care of already, so just wanted to say I appreciate being able to stay.
I appreciate you being willing to serve. I will say I have, uh, enjoyed a couple of meals over at the senior center, and, uh, if you're hungry on a Wednesday in particular, that's when I tend to go, around eleven thirty. They tend to serve pretty good stuff, and I've really enjoyed getting over there and talking with people there. It's, it's just been great. So, I, I, uh, I really appreciate all that the senior center does, and, um, yeah, and I appreciate your work on it, so. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed. Approval of the council meeting calendar for two thousand and twenty-three, city administrator, tell us about this.
Thank you. Included in your packet is the proposed calendar for your meetings this upcoming year, and I wanna thank Kristen for preparing that. Um, essentially, our municipal code outlines when you should meet as a governing body. Municipal Code two four zero seven zero states the regular meeting of the city council shall be held on the first and third Tuesday of each month, commencing at seven P.M. So if you wondered why we're doing this, it's because someone put it into law and we have to. It also states that, um, if a holiday, excuse me, if one of these meetings falls on a legal holiday, the meeting will go on the next succeeding business day. One thing to note in your calendar that's proposed tonight is the first Tuesday in July falls on the Fourth of July. So rather than meeting on Independence Day pursuant to our statute and our ordinance, excuse me, um, we will meet on Wednesday, the Fifth, so just please make note of that. We've also tried to identify days that would be work sessions, and then we've also identified other holidays as it relates to, um, the city of Riverton's operations. So, um, with that, we recommend that the city council adopt this, uh, calendar for its meetings, and I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. You have any questions, I guess? All right, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-three council meeting calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, seconded by Councilman Bailey. Discussion. Everybody okay with meeting on the Fifth? The Fifth, the Fifth of July. Not in January. July. I guess that, from what I can see of the calendar, I guess that's, that looks like the only date that's displaced by virtue of a holiday, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, reports and comments. Council Committee reports, Councilmember Roundtable. I, I was joking in terms of what order to take this in. I know sometimes when I was on the council, we would do left to right or right to left. I was saying we should go in order by the second letter of their last name. And as I said that, I saw that we have three people that have As as the second letter of their last name. So that doesn't work. But let's start with Councilwoman Borders, could you go ahead and give us a report?
Well, we have two people that have O as the second letter of the name, so. Um, Your Honor, I really don't have anything to report as of yet.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good. Councilwoman Cox?
Um, we had one special meeting with the senior endowment, um, to replace a stove, so we got that taken care of last week before, uh, the end of the year, and other than that, we haven't had any meetings so far. The rec board meeting is coming up, and I just blanked out on the date, but that's the day that we would have everyone turn in their applications. Um, I'm sure that's listed on the website, but January sixteenth, thank you. And that would be at the, um, central office for Fremont County.
January sixteenth?
Yep.
And do people have to have that submitted?
They'll submit them that night, and then we'll go over them.
Perfect.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Councilman La, uh, Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, and I, I guess thank you for excusing me for, from the last meeting. I got to go to Alaska for the first time. Winter time's a beautiful time to go up there. My son and his family had moved up there, and so we went up to visit for Christmas and bring his other daughter up to visit, and we had to spend ten days up there. It's dark until ten o'clock in the morning, and it gets dark about three thirty, so you better do whatever you're gonna do and do it quick. But it was forty degrees warmer up there than it was here that week, so. Pretty bad when you have to go to the Arctic Circle to get warmer than Riverton, Wyoming. So, we, we enjoyed it thoroughly, so I appreciate you guys excusing me, and, uh, again, I think the week before that, I, we were, had the FORCE Committee meeting. I think you guys, um, I'm sure Kyle went over that thoroughly, that, uh, we're gonna look at doing the Davis Lane project next year, and, uh, so, you know, save the people that live on Sunset, two full years of being torn up, so. Probably the next year after that, we're gonna do the other half of Sunset. And, uh, so, again, those guys and gals that are on the FORCE Committee do a great job. They're very frugal with our, um, you know, our one cent money that we get, that we share, you know, with the county and the other municipalities. Uh, they're an extremely frugal bunch of folks, and they, they are very- They're an extremely frugal bunch of folks, and they, they are very careful in particular about what they spend their money on and make sure we're doing it efficiently, so I have to compliment that on that. Sometimes to the point where it's hard to get something done, but that's okay, good healthy discussion about that's a, a good thing. And that's the only meeting that I had officially. Again, you know, obviously, over the last several days, we've had a lot of snowfall, and I spent a bunch of that time plowing snow myself. And every time I was out, whether it was early in the morning or late at night, the city crews were out there doing their thing, and I really appreciate them, I think they did an excellent job. We can argue till, you know, the next millennium on whether to the side or to the middle is okay, but plowing is the best. So, I, I think it's amazing, again, we've had a lot of snow last year and this year, and I think they've, they've been on it and getting it going, and I know they've had some equipment issues and all that, so, you know, Brian, you're gonna have to stay up nights and start mechanicking, so. I don't know if that'll help or not. But I, I, that's, that's my only negative comment is, but it's the same problem everybody has, is just can't get enough parts and all of that kind of stuff to keep everything running, and the snow blowers, I think, just beat themselves to death when they, when they run them, so. I think they've done a fantastic job, and I know they've been running shorthanded and all kinds of hours, and so I think it's, they've done a fabulous job, in my opinion. For the most part, we weren't driving on, you know, a foot of snow on the main thorough fliers, and, and that's, you know, about all you can do, so. I see today they were out plowing to the center on some of the secondary, third-type streets, and so, you know, one chunk at a time's all we can do this thing. And I'm sure, you know, every other community in Wyoming's having the same problem. I looked at the road report over the last couple of days, and there's a lot of red south of us, so we're lucky that our roads are open for the most part, so. It's all half, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Larson?
The only meeting I've attended was in December, was the airport meeting which Mike and I attended. And we have surpassed our magic number of ten thousand, we would have been considerably higher had we not had a pandemic and fired all the old airport pilots that were old enough to retire, and so the major airlines said that's a good way of, of stopping bankruptcy, and so that's why we're suffering from two, two a day instead of four a day, or one a day versus zero, but the airport is, I feel, managed quite well. And to second what Mike said, no matter what time I get up, and a lot of time it's after two o'clock in the morning, the city is out there, and I'm just giggling, and there, federal is clean, Maine is clean, Sunset is clean up to the hospital. It might be two thousand and seventeen, but I haven't heard of an ambulance not being able to get where they're supposed to be going, which is, which is commendable. I mean, I realize that, you know, if we had more equipment, we could do a lot of things, but we got what we got, and I am just astounded at how well and maintained they are. When I came here in eighty-five, it wasn't as good as it is now, okay? Second thing is, as my wife calls it, the garbage committee, but it's not, it's solid waste. Next year is two thousand and twenty-four, and by the act of the supreme being, D E Q, they were gonna close Lander. Well, they're not gonna close Lander next year, they're closing it somewhere between twenty-seven and twenty-eight to thirty, because we really don't know what the figures are, how much we put in there. But at some point in time, we are gonna be hauling garbage from Riverton to Sandral, and that'll be a change in operation. You will not be delivering garbage on the weekends to the receptacle down there, you will be taking it to Sandral. They're building three, two right now, buildings to accommodate that, one at Lander for a transfer station, transfer from Lander to Sandral for private, or for citizen collection, and secondly, one out of Sandral will be improved and et cetera. So, that's what's happening with the committees that I am with, thank you.
Thank you. And I think we are set to talk trash, I just like saying that.
Yeah.
We're set to talk trash next week in a work session, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, is Andy coming over on that?
Your honor, Councilman Andy has committed to that, and we, we hope that he can still...
See, he's, he's in, he's no longer works for the, for Fremont, he is a consultant now.
Your honor, that's correct, and he will be relocating as well, but before he does, he was willing to come speak to you.
He's already relocated. He's already in Arizona.
Well, I better call him and make sure he's gonna come back.
Oh, he will, he will.
Councilwoman Salisbury?
Your honor, I have not attended any meetings since our last council meeting, we should have a chamber meeting this Thursday.
Good. All right. City administrators report, Mr. Butterfield?
Thank you, your honor, I'll just have a few things, first and foremost, welcome and congratulations, and also to our re-elected members of the council, look forward to working with you. I, I do need to announce and declare that pursuant to Wyoming Statute six five one one eight, members of the council who are present tonight disclosed and made available their financial statements as required, and then also the city's finance director, city administrator, and city clerk did so as well. I think it's appropriate to start with snow removal, I know that's been a topic on everybody's mind, and I think there are just two messages I'd like to share. First is, we ask folks to do their best with their sidewalks, and we also ask our, our community to be good neighbors, so if you see your neighbor struggling getting their sidewalks done, help them out, and let's do some service, but there has been a lot of snow, and we still have people that require the use of our sidewalks, so I encourage folks that are watching to plow their, their sidewalks. And then when it comes to snow removal efforts, I would like to reiterate some of the comments, I'm very proud of our team, and I've seen the hours that have gone in and the leadership that's happened from our public works team, and I'm very thankful that they spent their New Year's holiday fighting a storm that lasted, it felt like, fifty hours. It might have been only close to forty, but that storm just wouldn't quit, I don't know about you guys, but I shoveled my own walks four times before it stopped snowing. So I'm appreciative of our team. Just a couple things to, to be aware of. Indogon, I had this pulled up, and then I just lost it, but when it comes to our snow and ice policy, we will happily look at that again and see if our priorities are correct, but just as a reminder, with the equipment that we have and the personnel resources, we have our priorities focus on arterial streets and collector streets, so those are our streets that receive the most traffic. We also focus on hills, curves, and hazardous locations, and then school areas. There is a map online that people can look at and see how we deploy our resources and when. But I want to make note that, well, there's two points I should make on this. Depending on the type of storm, and like the one we just had, sometimes it's not possible to even get to the priorities we have listed because we're trying to maintain and stay on top of the snow as it's falling. So our policy states that if storm conditions are such that not all priorities can be addressed in a given cycle, the lower priorities may be dropped until adequate equipment and manpower is available to ser, until, excuse me, available to service them. And that doesn't mean that they don't get serviced, it just means that we're doing our best to maintain the initial priorities. We also have a clause in our policy that states local and residential streets are not intended to receive regular winter maintenance. However, requests for maintenance at specific locations may be made to the public works department, and we also have a service line that's eight five six three six eight seven for those in the audience who intend to call on those at home. But I also want to say that we put a lot of discretion in our public works director and the operations division manager to help address some of these local and residential streets that normally wouldn't receive service. Our policy states that local and residential streets will receive service only after the above referenced policies, or excuse me, the priorities, I gotta stop looking away from my screen, but the above listed priorities that I mentioned are treated and when conditions warrant. Street width, parking, drainage, and other considerations will be considered when determining the appropriate service response to these local and residential streets. With the amount of snow that we've had, it's hard to determine where you're gonna put it, and it's already been mentioned that plowing it to the center and the side has drawbacks in each location, and sometimes the street width is the worst enemy that we have, because you can't put it in the center, and with this amount of snow, if you put it to the side, you will bury people's driveways, which they don't seem to appreciate. So we think through that as best as we can, and we do try and deploy our resources. Our, our city staff recognizes that outside of the priorities that we have treated, a lot of our streets are pretty difficult to traverse right now. I think we can all share our story tonight about trying to get somebody out of the snow, and so Brian and his team will, will keep working on this, and we'll examine our policy. This is one of those years where we're just gonna have to do the best we can, and we'll commit to staying on the hour and on the clock, and we'll do our best to keep our equipment alongside with us. We'll, we'll be happy to answer any questions, should you have any on that, but moving on, we do have a force meeting this upcoming Monday at eleven A.M., and that will be in the bullpen, and the public is welcome to attend. We do have that work session next week, and we hope to have you all there to have good discussion. And then, since it was a reference, I just got an email for our annual report for our employments. We recorded the calendar year two thousand and twenty-two with twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-one people flying out of Central Wyoming Regional, which is, I think, a pretty remarkable number, in the sense that it's eighty-four percent of last year's number, and we've had fifty percent of the flights. People are flying and using our airport, basically it was a fifteen percent decrease from last year's employment mark of fifteen thousand. So, while we have had frequency issues, we haven't had the schedule we wanted all year, but I still think we're providing service that our county relies on, and I think that's a pretty important thing to note, that we just landed the year with under thirteen thousand employments. And with that, your honor, I will cede the microphone.
Thank you, sir. Exciting to have people using the airport, we've had some discussions about the airport lately, and I guess I would just note how appreciative I am that we have that available, it just makes a lot of things possible in our community, so. My comments, I have attended a lot of meetings, but they weren't necessarily last month, and they weren't as the mayor was, as the mayor-elect. I'm, I'm used to Councilwoman Borders giving her report on everything coming up, and you...
I slacked off tonight, your honor.
I will say, we do have, coming up Wind River Visitors Council is going to be doing a Riverton community celebration, this is Saturday, January twenty-first, at four thirty P.M., co-hosted by the Wyoming Off-Road Racers Association, Hampton Inn and Suites, and the Y Riverton Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Center. This will be at Bunks Barbecue, so part of that is meet and greet with Mayor Hancock, but I think one of the biggest things really with that is, is just trying to get some excitement for our new opportunity that we have here with the ice racing season, and so that certainly looks to be a fun event. Other than that, I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to serve Riverton. I've had many people that have already contacted me with thoughts, questions, everything, and I would encourage you to keep doing that. My phone number is three oh seven eight four zero one two zero six, that's the same number that all of the council members have, that's the same number that Mr. Butterfield has, that's the same number that my wife calls me using. So I'm telling you that you can get ahold of me using that, you're not going to have somebody else answer unless, for some reason, I forgot my phone at the house and one of my kids has gotten ahold of it. If a kid does answer, please be patient, they're probably looking for me frantically. So that is the way to get ahold of me, and I just, I, I want to express just how serious I take it to be serving the community in this position, and that part of that is access, so I want to make sure if people know, want to get ahold of me, they know they can. I have a Facebook page you can get ahold of me on, I have one that's really meant to be more in the position as mayor, one that's a private one, I, I don't care which one you use, feel free, reach out. The second thing, of course, is email, thancock@rivertonwy.gov. T Hancock. Easy to remember. First name, or first initial, last name. So if you have any thoughts, let me know. We sit here and we talk a lot about things like snow removal, and talking about how things are going on in the city, and I feel like sometimes citizens think that because we're talking about it and, and we're saying this is what's going on, that maybe they feel like their concerns are being dismissed, and I don't want people to feel like that. Even Mr. Vogel, when he was talking about snow removal, I hope people understand, we, we hear you, we really want to do what we can to make Riverton better, and we're going to be doing the best we can. So I guess things for the citizens to look forward to that we've got going on, there's a lot going on in our city. We've got a lot of different irons in the fire, we've got a lot of things that are being looked at, and I hope just as you see changes or ideas coming up, that we can be open, we can be receptive to the idea of that we're trying to improve Riverton, and we just invite you to help us. And if you have ideas, if you have thoughts, if you have something you want to throw your effort behind, let us know, reach out to us, we'll put you to work, I guarantee it, we can find something for you to do. But other than that, I'm just excited to serve, I'm very thrilled to be here with this group, I, I, I feel like everybody on the council just has something to offer, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate your hard work, so, and I appreciate our city staff. I, I cannot express enough how grateful I was to be driving down my road and getting stuck, and just so happened, we had one of our wonderful plow drivers come by, pick up a shovel, and help me get myself out. So that's the kind of people that we have here in Riverton, and I don't want to just say that that's some of them, I mean, that's, that's, that's everybody. People are very mission-oriented, they're very excited, they love serving, so I hope you, you reach out and, and let us know what we can do to serve you. We don't have an executive session, so I guess that would be it, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any opposition? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Meeting's adjourned at eight twenty-four.